In addition to being a mother, I'm also a constitutional advocate which leads me to my first and for first area of concern. My oldest started 4th grade this year, has a happy, good, lucky nine-year-old. Today, after just three months in school, she is frustrated and herself is feeling uncomfortable. For these new standards, and for what? For these new standards that the president essentially bribed the states into implementing. Standards that have not yet even been written, much less read. They want to implement national testing and one-size-fits-all education. As most of you were, the No Child Left Behind, that didn't have very well results either, so we're still really confused about why they wanted to start this one. In the recent parent-teacher conferences, my daughter's teacher, who told me during our conference that her and other teachers have just surrendered to the standards. My son's teacher actually told me that what makes Common Core so great is that they're no longer concentrating on getting, on the kids getting the right answer, but showing how they get their answer. Isn't the right answer more important? Why are teachers being made to feel like they have to surrender? Because of bureaucratic convenience? How convenient? Calculating exactly who knows what and who needs to know what? As was told by one of my favorite Pennsylvania high school students, "The task of teaching is never quantifiable." The implementation of federal standards is unconstitutional. Where in the United States Constitution does it talk about education? It doesn't, which is exactly why it should be left to the state. The federal government, in my opinion, has no business writing local school curriculums. Regardless of what they have tried to tell us, what one kid is learning in New York does not have to be what my son and daughter are learning here. In fact, I don't even believe that what one kid is learning at VOMIDA necessarily means that another kid in the same school should be learning at the same grade. Education is not a one-size-fits-all. You cannot squeeze a triangle into a square, nor can you squeeze a square into a triangle. And I want it to bring, show you, these are actually two examples of problems. And on this side, it's how we were all taught, and it's done in a quick, easy steps, under 45 seconds. Sure. And on this side, you actually have the problem. Now, the original problem was 25 times 21. So, they get the square, and it's all drawn out for them. Now, I did the easy way, I did it highlighting. These kids actually have to do like Xs, about 400 times, another 100 times. And it took my daughter over three minutes, and that's once we figured out even how to do it. And here is a problem, the original one was 43 times 25, done the normal way. And here, where I had to literally look online and find the answer, and I'm still not understanding how 800's coming up, how 60's coming up, and how, but that is how they were made to do it. And it's getting to the point where our nice ending tears, frustration. My daughter, she thinks she's dumb, and she's not. And these standards just aren't being taught with any kind of care. And, um, thank you. And, um, she participates in the after-school tutoring. And after-school tutoring is not helping. I don't think that these teachers are into it. I mean, I think they're forced into it, it's not healthy. It's frustrating for the parents, and it's frustrating to the kids. And I just think we need to keep pushing to get it out of our schools, because it's not, it's not working. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize, okay, I'm gonna go to this last name, I'm so sorry.
Zeska Hury.
I'm sorry?
Zeska Hury.
Thank you.
That's okay.
I have a bladder rouse, so I understand.
Oh, yes, exactly.
Okay. Well, I just want to introduce myself again, I'm Jamie Zeska Hury. I have two daughters in this school district. One is a junior at San Dimas, and this is my daughter at Trinity. So, I've spoken with a couple of you guys before, and as I promised, I will continue to fight and find facts so that maybe I can help educate you guys, and myself, on why I feel this curriculum is so wrong for these kids. So, I'll just read what I got here. I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to ask you a few questions. How does, how do California standards stack up against Common Core standards? In math, language arts, arts and science? The results may surprise you. Massachusetts, try to edit, it's a hard one for me, and California standards were high, highest in the nation. First, California ranked number one in math. Massachusetts ranked number two pre-Common Core. Massachusetts ranked number one in English Language Arts. California ranked number two pre-Common Core. California was one of three states to get an A grade for science standards. Massachusetts received an A minus. In sharp contrast, Common Core next generation of science standards received a C grade. If this is true, why would we be so eager to adopt an untested, unbenchmarked set of new standards? This raises more, a basic question. If our educational system is so deeply flawed, then why do students from all around the world come to the United States for their education? Here's another question. Is it appropriate to compare California State with the largest and most diverse population in the U.S. with countries such as Finland, Singapore, and Switzerland? Students' test scores often presented as undeniable evidence of failure of our educational system. Consider Diane Ratchett's comments. She quotes, "Using data on the U.S. Department of Education website that the current sense of crisis about our nation's schools was exaggerated, the test scores were the highest in our history for whites, African-Americans, Latinos, and Asians." The graduation rates were the highest, and the dropout rate was the lowest in our history ever. This is like food for thought, I hope all you guys are getting, and this is why I feel so strongly about this. We are the wealthiest country in the world, we are the most free. We put a man on a move, we are not calm at all. And we will not, and we will not allow our children to become guinea pigs for the state. I appreciate this opportunity to state my concerns to the Board of VOMIDA. Math is where Common Core is most evident here in this school district. Over the last several months, we have spoken to parents struggling with Common Core math. The students, the story is always the same. Elementary kids spending inordinate amounts of time on math homework, parents unable to help their kids, kids having nightly meltdowns. I've experienced this myself. Calling themselves stupid, former straight-A students aren't passing anymore. There's a couple quotes I'd like to read you. One is from Dr. James Milgram. He's a professor of math at Stanford University. He's internationally known as the mathematician on the Apollo Moon Project. He was the only mathematician on the Common Core Validation Committee. He refused to sign off on the standards, claiming, "By the end of the year, by the end of the seventh year, Common Core math is about two years behind the math of other highly achieving countries." And then another quote by Dr. Marina Ratner. She's also a professor of math, she's from the University of California, Berkeley, has written, "The most astounding statement I have read is the claim that Common Core standards are internationally benchmarked. They are not. The Common Core fails in any comparison with the standards of high achieving countries. They are lower in the total scope of learned material, in the depth and rigor of the treatment of the mathematical subjects, and in the delayed and often inconsistent, incoherent introductions of mathematical concepts and skills." There are five reasons I am concerned about the Common Core. The inception. In 2009, President Obama used 4.35 billion of federal stimulus money to entice governors of the 50 states to participate in a race to the top. If the governors agreed to adopt Common Core standards sight unseen and build extensive data systems to track students, they were also given millions of dollars. Those governors who did not sign on were threatened with cuts to Title I fundings, and as we know, those fundings are for, to aid the poor and disadvantaged students. My second point is the drafting. We know very little about the group that actually wrote the standards, but the 27-member committee was apparently dominated by representatives from the testing industry. We do not know that Common Core math standards were written, um, sorry. We do know that Common Core math standards were written by Jason Zimba. Zimba freely admits in a 2010 video that these standards, I quote, "would only prepare students for a minimum junior college level." Thirdly, the implications. The data mining and subsequent tracking of students at an early age destroys what is unique about American system of education. We have traditionally enjoyed the freedom to be late bloomers. Common Core ends this by channeling students early into a career or college path. Fourthly, the control. Another unique feature of Common Core is that is copyrighted. This is unprecedented in the American education. This means that the two private groups, National Governors Association and the Council Chief of State Officers are the only ones who can add, subtract, or in any way change Common Core. Granted, teachers can add to Common Core, mandate 15% of independent instruction. However, none of this is 15% added content will be on the standardized test. Lastly, the cost. Unknown, California has an unfunded federal mandate of 1.6 billion to just implement the Common Core. Some question the, the, I'm stuck here, the, the, legality, sorry, of an unfunded federal mandate. That's just pretty much what I want to tell you I have found, and have been looking. And like I said, my concern is just our kids, our youth, and what we're changing is, do we even know it's gonna work? You know? So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gutierrez?
Good evening, this is my second time here. I just want to say I'm homeschooling my freshmen in my 4th year now, but I still will be a voice for our children. So, I just want that to be for the record.
Danielle Gutierrez and Trinity Hewitt, are you coming together?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you drop that microphone?
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Danielle Gutierrez, and I'm here to talk about how the Common Core is really hard. And the Common Core gives me headaches and gives me stomach aches. And... It's hard for me to understand it, because it doesn't make any sense. It takes eight hours to get my homework done, and I end up feeling stupid every day. Thank you for your time.
Donna Jensen-Jones?
Hello, I'm Donna Jensen-Jones, I met some of you. Oh, sorry. I'm Donna Jensen-Jones, I met some of you at a previous meeting, and I'm gonna have some follow-up meetings in the future, and thank you for that. I appreciate that some of you are letting us have our input in. If I look tired, I am. I have been studying Common Core every night, three and four hours a night. I haven't found any supporters of it, except the school districts and the developers of the curriculum. I have seen various videos of teachers being bullied, who don't teach it, who are against it, who are threatening their jobs. That is no way to run our education system. What my real concern here is, first, I was concerned with the way the math was being taught. I'm still concerned with it. But what I'm really concerned with now is a much deeper problem. I don't understand, and I don't know if you realize this, that our children's data is being shared with thousands of people, thousands of companies. I don't think any of you ever had to go through that with your children. You never had to worry who was crying into your children's education. You were the only one that was crying into it, or the teacher. You never had to worry about some company in the United States crying into your child's education. Or maybe in another country. You never had to worry about that. We're having to worry about that, and that's not fair. And that's not how I want my money, my tax dollars, to be spent. There are so many things that have changed. The FERC law now allows third parties greater access to students' personal information without parental consent. I don't think anyone should stand for that. I don't think you should allow us to stand for that. You shouldn't have to stand for that. I don't want anyone looking at my granddaughter's statistics, except her teacher, maybe the school district, her parents. That should be all. I don't want the government to be that involved with our children. There's no need for it. What are they doing with that information? The only people that are gonna be making money from this are the developers of the curriculum, and the software companies, and the districts that take money from the government to enforce this. CEO Jose Ferreira claims that the human race is about to enter a totally data-mind existence. Is this what we want for our children? I don't think so. Education is the world's largest data industry. Now, it's gonna get worse with Common Core. I don't know if any of you are aware of all this, but if you're not, you should be. This information gives outside third parties full access to exactly what students know. How they think, how they feel. The administration is moving at a rapid clip to ensure that all children learning will be using adaptive software. As we sit here tonight, Newton Company already has access to over 10 million students just through their partnership with Pearson, though most administrators, teachers, and parents have never heard of Jose Ferreira or his startup. Moreover, Arnie Duncan boasts that these public-private partnerships, every child will have access to adaptive hardware and the chance to learn 24/7. Duncan insists the idea that a child could sit at a desk six hours a day, five days a week, nine months a year to learn simply doesn't make sense anymore. Sounds like we won't even have teachers or classrooms anymore. Sounds like everybody will be hooked up to a computer while they data-mind our children. That's not what we want for our children. That's not America. In this brave new world of education developed by corporations instead of classroom teachers, our children will be on-call 24/7, giving campus third parties access to their lives outside of the classroom. When proponents of Common Core promise personal learning plans for every student, I assure you, parents do not understand that this means statisticians will monitor their child day in and day out. I assure you, parents will fight back once it becomes clear that the 21st century learning will allow complete strangers full access to their children's mind. And we all know about the breaches of all these computer systems. How do we know? And who do we know is gonna get into those systems? The largest companies have not been able to stop these computer hacks from getting into them. You won't be able to either. Without stricter privacy laws, the next generation will be forced to grow up in a world where their thoughts, their actions, and their feelings are continuously monitored, accessed, and reported. This is not the world that I want for my grandchildren, and I'm sure the people sitting in this room do not want it for their children. I do not want to trade my grandchild's privacy for unsubstantiated claims made by individuals, corporations, and governments who stand to profit wildly from this reform. We're not gonna go away. We are willing to work with the district. But we're in it for the long haul, however long it takes. I want my granddaughter to enjoy going to school every day. We have adored this school district. We love this school, we've supported it continuously. And fundraisers, volunteering classrooms, whatever we can do, donating items to the classroom whenever they need it. We want to continue to do that. We want to continue to help you. But don't sell the children down the river so the district can get money. Think about what this is doing to the families. My granddaughter, who was practically a straight-A student, is now, her grades are going down. She cries. And lately, since we've been complaining so much about the Common Core math, which is a real concern to me, the last three or four nights now, we're getting the traditional math sent home now. Why is that? I mean, I love it, but why is that? Is that just to get us to be quiet for a few days, or what? So, I want to see more involvement from everybody to really understand what's going on here. And not just pass out curriculum, I want you to understand it. And unfortunately, I didn't have the time. I would have liked to bring some problems for you to figure out, and I can almost guarantee you that you would have difficulty. Thank you very much for your time.
I would like to recognize Diane Hickey.
Good evening, School Board members. My name is Diane Hickey. I'm a co-founder of the National Association for Children in Safe Technology. My comments are in regard to radiation emissions from wireless classrooms. I want to bring to your attention new information to add to the decades of scientific studies numbering in the thousands and long-established findings of the health harms from wireless radiation exposure. The University of California, Berkeley, an established, well-discussed research and educational institution. In June, Center for Family and Community Health, UC Berkeley, released some tips to reduce your exposure to wireless radiation. Among these are: Turn off Wi-Fi devices on gain use by kids. Use hardwired networks in schools to provide internet access. Also released in June is the BabySafe Project, which I know would be of particular interest to expectant teachers. The website reads, "Bringing physicians, scientists, and educators together to help inform women about the risks that wireless radiation poses to pregnancy and to urge expectant mothers to limit their exposure." Dr. Hugh Taylor, Chief of Production, Yale University Hospital, explains in a video, "Scientific studies demonstrate that exposures to wireless radiation results in degradation of memory and learning capabilities, most notably ADHD." Doctors for Safer Schools has issued this statement, "Standards are outdated, based only on thermal levels, not based on science, and place all of us at significant risk, especially women and children. We ask school boards, educators, and parents to realize existing standards fail to protect students and staff." Did you know, in October, an LAUSD teacher was given a reasonable accommodation, allowing to move to a wired classroom for health reasons? In public comment, she stated that students were bleeding from the ears and the nose, and no incident reports were allowed. Did you know, in 2012, an Italian court ruled that wireless radiation emitted from cell phones can cause brain tumors? Did you know, just recently, there's peer-reviewed scientific evidence that wireless radiation emissions should be classified as a carcinogen, as a Group 1 percentage? Group 1 means that it is known to cause cancer. Rather than resisting what is clearly, insistently being communicated by medical doctors, researchers, scientists, and the public, we should all be moving to protect our children and moving the messages forward to others. I hope that you will come to realize a critical need to share this information until it becomes common knowledge. We cannot wait for dead bodies and diseases to make this all self-evident. We cannot wait to see it in the news or proclaimed by our government. It is time to turn the corner and help others to do too as well. The answer is simple: wire the school technology. I have some handouts available. Who should I give those to? Okay, thank you.
Joan, I messed this up last month, and I'm gonna probably do it again. Embriano?
Yes, that's Diane.
You told me last month, and I still did it wrong.
You got it right.
I did. Felt good, I'm glad, I just thought I could remember now, thank you.
My name is Joan Embriano, I'm a parent. I live in Fullerton, California. I run a website called FullertonInformer.com and WifiDangerous.com. I've been here before. I think you're familiar with what I'm here to tell you. I don't know how to, there's a lot of wishful thinking in this room. I know a lot of you, I've been here for a long time. I know one of you is getting close to retirement. There really isn't much I can say, except for you need to open your eyes to what's going on. There are a lot of agendas at work with Common Core. This is the biggest thing that has faced humanity, in my opinion, since the dawn of civilization with respect to how this thing is all set up with Project Inkwell, with Apple Computer, with the highest levels of government, scientists, the scientific community. They're lock, stock, and barrel-bought and paid-for, ladies and gentlemen. The wireless industry owns the scientific community. We have the ex-head of Homeland Security running the UC system. Her name is Janet Appolitano. If you're gonna have objectivity coming out of a research institution, you're not gonna put the head of it to stop over in charge of it. I'm here to tell you, folks, that aside from dumbing our kids down, developing algorithms and dossiers on families, there's an agenda involved that involves fertility. I have laid that out, and if you haven't looked at it, I will re-email it all to you. These claims are not wild by any stretch of the imagination. The symbolism involved in some of these companies, like Apple Computer, for example, they priced their first model at $666.66. In my 48 years on this planet, I've never entered a store and saw a product priced at that, and that's not a very good number. When you have companies like Artemis Technologies that are coming out with the next-generation communication device, and they're gonna replace cell towers, they're gonna have routers everywhere instead of these wireless infrastructures that we're accustomed to. Artemis is the goddess of fertility and childbearing. It's also the goddess of the hunt. And their symbol is an inverted uterus. Human reproduction turned on its head. Another symbol that they use is a wireless device in the crosshairs. This technology follows the device around and encompasses it with about a 2-3-centimeter sphere of microwave energy. This is gonna follow the user from the cradle to the grave, and the majority of these devices are held in close, direct proximity to the reproductive organs. You look at the symbolism on Apple Computer's Cupertino headquarters, it is the human egg missing the smooth endoplasmic reticulum, which is responsible for the zona hardening of the egg upon fertilization. In the absence of zona hardening at fertilization, you have what's called poly-spermine. The more sperm gets in that egg, it's no longer viable. I can't begin to tell you how serious this is. And I know a lot of you have been here for a very long time, and have done a good job. You've run a good district. But the tables have been turned on you, not by the parents, but by the government. From the people up above, they don't care about you, and they don't care about the kids. There are agendas, folks, to lower the population. They're not hiding that. If you open some of your books, you're gonna see the propaganda in there about how overpopulated we are, how we're running out of resources, how there's not enough water, how there's not enough this. But if you get in an airplane and go to Vegas for the weekend, you'll see that there's land from here to Kingdom Come, there's an aquifer a mile deep under our feet. The weather is not global warming, it is actually geoengineering. Folks, we're being duped, and our kids are in the crosshairs. And what's happening with Common Core, there's a way out. Give them their stinking money back. Get the kids out of this thing, go back to teaching the way you used to teach, and send these people packing with their dirty dough. And listen to these parents, don't try to marginalize them, don't tell them they need to go back to the parent night so their kids can figure this all work out. Just please open your eyes to what's happening. And try to remember that we're all human beings, created in the image of God, and no one here has the right to take away any child's right to have a child. And I do believe... And I do believe that at the heart of this wireless agenda, that is precisely what is at stake.
And Eric Stoltz?
Hi. You did well on my name, thank you.
I tried. I tried. The last one I might, I tried.
I usually get pretty loud, heard about everywhere I go. My name is Eric Stoltz. I'm a father of four. I'm actually from Garden Grove, California. Thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to speak. I just wanted to touch base really quickly with Common Core. I think that the parents before me have done a pretty good job. I don't think I really need to add to that. I would just like to say that I know that it wasn't your choice. I know it wasn't the teacher's choice, Ms. Corrady, or the state, or the federal government, however you want to say it. But what you do with it is your choice. These examples of these two young ladies here that spoke, I've spoken now, I've talked to probably 100 times, and I've been to many board meetings. I've had a Garden Grove School Board meeting several times. For teachers who repeat what these young ladies have said, I've heard of many parents from different parts of the county, Orange County in particular. It's not an isolated case. When I was in the second grade, I was advanced in math. If I had to do this, I probably wouldn't hang in math and go to bed with it. I was an engineering degree. You guys learned on non-C common core math. I think you probably all learned well. It's not rigorous. It's just foolish. It's not necessary. All these hard problems that they're giving these kids, not necessary. The easy, the normal math these parents showed has, could be gone back to recently. I recommend that you guys get educated with it. I know that, like I said, it's not your choice, but what you do with it is your choice. You can get educated. You can help the public get educated. The Orange County Board of Ed is doing an informational meeting, their second one. I know this, I lived in this home where you were there, the first one. I highly recommend that you all go to the second one. Learn about it. Both sides are being presented. I would recommend that you guys try to do something similar so that the parents don't have to go and spend hours on the computer learning about it. Because all they're gonna hear is what has been told you, which is only one side. There is a lot of other information out there. It would be good for transparency of the district to do something similar to that that they're supposed to do. I actually recommend you guys coming down. I'm gonna leave an invitation here. I'm, three of the opponents of Common Core that are speaking at the O.C. Board meeting are doing an informational meeting a week prior. It's not too far, it's down in Gina Hills. These flyers for you guys, the three to come to. It's not taboo. You guys can go. At the O.C. Board meeting, I had a Garden Grove School Board president and another one come. My personal invitation from myself. I don't know what they're gonna do with the information yet, but at least be informed. No, these parents are not just coming out and giving them a bunch of junk. It's true. It's true. It's not necessary. You guys have the power to do it. There's a statement at the O.C. Board meeting that Hugh Hewitt came out with, who's a radio personality. He's on the conservative side, but on his program, he was upfront, he said, "I am ambiguous to, I don't care about Common Core. It's not my issue. I'm a pro Oregon." He says, "However, your jobs will be," and he's addressing the O.C. Board, he says, "Your jobs will be elevated because of the way this is coming, that's coming down the pipe."